...thousand sixteen regular city council meeting to order and let's stand for the uh, the legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call shows everyone's here. We have approval of the minutes of January twenty-fifth, anything uh, ordinary?
Remove the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the bills, anybody have anything?
Yeah, I have one on uh, I think it's page, well first I'd like to make a request, could we end up getting this layout modified so that the page numbers aren't in the hole punch? It makes it very difficult to try to identify for anybody else what you're looking for. But page four of four, I believe is where it lands, it's four pages back. There's a, a number of charges for Visicom, but the back, backup software and remote storage, is that a typical, I don't remember it being that high before.
Um, it hasn't been that high before. What happened is, um, Visicom came to me in January and said that there were several outstanding invoices, we went through all of the mail that we had and had not received copies of those invoices, so we were getting caught up on that.
Oh, okay, so it's just essentially outstanding bills that we hadn't gotten to?
Outstanding bills, yes.
Okay, thank you, that's actually all I had.
I'll move the bills.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the agenda, do we have anything?
I have two things that I'd like to add, um, I placed them both in front of you. One, um, is the East Civis agreement, um, we talked at the last meeting about foundation organizations that could help us with that, um, while a one-year agreement is within our, uh, within my spending limit, they'd like us to do a three-year agreement because that actually brings the price down from sixty-nine hundred dollars, well actually, one year is not in our price range, it's sixty-nine hundred dollars, if we sign a three-year agreement, it brings it down to forty-nine hundred dollars a year, so I wanted to bring it to council because it's also a three-year contract. But that gives us pre-award and post-award services for managing all of the grants and access to federal, state, and foundation grants, so we can talk about that more. And then the other item, um, talk about the subject that was brought up in January about hiring a part-time administrative employee for the city clerk treasurer and myself to take on some of the additional work that we have with the elections and the packets and the DDA stuff.
Remove the agenda as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Hey. To reach your point where we get the public comment, is anybody out in the audience that would like to come out and talk about something that isn't on the agenda? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Darrell Lane, I'm South Lyon, the oldest living lifetime resident of the city. And my comments are on Pumpkinfest. Pumpkinfest is destroying the city of South Lyon. What it amounts to is you paid thirty-six thousand dollars for a default, a problem in Pumpkinfest when it was being run, okay? And I would like to know if there was ever an itemized, it was said it was rejected because of the insurance company wouldn't pay for it. Did you ever see an itemized statement, anybody, Lydell or anybody that was on committee at that time see an itemized statement about that withdrawal, I mean that, that, um, they would not pay insurance, Pumpkinfest Committee?
I'm afraid I don't understand what you're getting at.
Pumpkinfest Committee, when they turned around and turned around and submitted that report because of the fault, and we turned around, the city paid the thirty-six thousand, they said their insurance company would not pay it. Did you ever see an itemized statement of that?
I think you're speaking about the lawsuit that we had for, um, the police brutality issue?
Yes.
And the fact that Pumpkinfest's insurance with the way it was written at the time and the way that we did insurance, um, Pumpkinfest was not held liable, it went against the city's insurance.
Was there, was there ever, did you ever see a statement from their company?
Yes, we did.
That they would not pay?
That they would not pay, yes, we did.
Alright, then why?
They, I believe the city attorney could have better explain it, but without having the documents in front of me, that's been nearly a year ago since-
I understand that, I understood that, but I was just wondering if you-
Yes, we did receive all the documentation as to why.
The reason I say this is because for the simple reason the city of South Lyon ended up paying thirty-six thousand, okay, so that was the taxpayers', okay, taxpayers ended up paying thirty-six thousand, okay, and when that was done, when you turn around and pay that thirty-six thousand, excuse me, then you turn around and left a loophole there for the next person that has a problem, they're gonna sue the city too, and for all our money because the loophole was there. You turned around and paid without no I, yes, or no's or anything else, it's thirty-six thousand.
The city didn't pay that, the MMRMA, our insurance company, paid out the settlement, not the city.
Yes.
But the loophole has been closed, and the way that we changed the requirements for the insurance.
So how much liability does Pumpkinfest have?
They have full liability now.
Yeah, but what's full liability?
For anything that happens, um, other than police actions, if the police are directly involved with it and cause it, then they would be liable just as they would in any other situation in which a police officer was charged outside of Pumpkinfest for a similar charge.
Okay, then, the two policemen were working for the, for the Pumpkinfest, were they either one of them involved in this?
They were working for the city doing overtime for Pumpkinfest, but they were-
I thought Pumpkinfest was paying them.
Pumpkinfest reimbursed the city, but they don't pay them directly, no.
So that's their loophole?
I wouldn't, and again, we've closed that loophole with the insurance.
Because that's their loophole then, if you turn around and were paying them, they were paying you when you're paying them, then that doesn't make Pumpkinfest liable.
Mr. Lane?
Yes?
Can I make a suggestion that you maybe make an appointment with our city manager to discuss this?
No, but I, I was just trying to say, I was going on, I was just getting started on this, but I was reasoning, I was trying to get up with that particular item at this particular time. Okay, now what it amounts to is, the, what, what's gonna happen next time something occurs? We back to square one again, okay, and the second thing is, liability, we don't know what they've got for liability, and the, the Haybrook bales, they're there for the pumpkins on them, is the biggest liability we have in the city of South Lyon. One match, the wrong time, and the whole city of Detroit, city of South Lyon is destroyed. These, the roofs on every one of these buildings, nothing but asphalt. It takes that, that flame, that little spark to get up on there and bang, 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 everything is. And yet it's been done every year, don't get me wrong, there's nothing happened, but it's a, it's an accident waiting to happen.
No, I think we'll take that under consideration.
Well, it needs to be.
Start to look at it, I mean, that's something that's just brought up recently, I mean, they've started doing that now.
I know, but I said, I was bringing it up so that something could be confronted thereof, you understand?
Uh huh.
Because for the simple reason, it's an obstacle, it's very detrimental, and the same thing, what about, what about all these cars, uh, up and down the streets and everything else? What happens if anybody, I'd like to know legal content here, and your respect then, what happens if some child runs out one of these cars and gets hit in a city property during Pumpkinfest? Who's gonna be liable? The city of South Lyon?
If somebody gets hit by a car, they're, the driver would be responsible, especially if it's not-
Yeah, but it's on city property, it's on city property.
There aren't vehicles driving on city property during Pumpkinfest.
And the city won't be liable.
No.
Yeah, Mr. Lane, I think we're kinda going down a road where we just could go on talking about this all night, I know, I understand your concern tremendously about this, you know, but, uh, I don't think we're gonna solve anything.
I didn't mean to solve it, I was just laying it out in line to for what, something has to be thought about. And layman turns because we're, it's, like I said, it's an accident starting to happen, and there's too many pros and cons about this, and plus the fact is that we pay for all these taxes, everything, the roads closed and everything else, all this, all this deal for Pumpkinfest, and who's getting any, who's getting any results from the Pumpkinfest? There's no businesses down there getting it because they can't do it, because the kid, when people come up here and they go up to the beer tent, they stay at a beer tent and let their kids run the streets.
Well, I bear to differ on that, where you see some of the businesses have very much benefited from the Pumpkinfest, some of them.
Okay, you think it is?
I have a friend that has a shop down there that they lined up out his door for, until six o'clock, so, you know, I mean, we can-
And what doors though?
We, I, I think we can get into a, an argument all the way all night long about this.
Okay, alright.
So I, I agree, I appreciate you bringing that to us, I think we'll take it all into consideration, and next time we'll look.
Good evening, everyone, excuse me, I'm Peter Alexander, I live at eight-five-four Norchester, um, I have a question about stop signs, actually, I'm not sure, are you appropriate for that? On Glen Meadows, there's actually a yield sign, I think it's the only yield sign in our neighborhood, and there's a lot of small children, and I noticed, and it's just, my neighbors have said this too, a lot of teenagers and things like that, they go through the yield signs pretty fast, and so we were wondering if we could put a stop sign and replace the yield sign. I don't know how, who I would go through on that.
I can address how and why signs are placed, and yield signs and stop signs are placed by what is called traffic warrants. There would be a number of reasons to have one or the other. Before any sign is placed in the city on a new subdivision, once a street is dedicated, a, or the police department would get a traffic engineer in to do a traffic study to determine at each and every intersection what the appropriate, appropriate signage is. So, assuming we're talking about a dedicated city street, the traffic study has been done, and it was determined that a yield sign was the appropriate signage for that intersection. Without actually physically going out and looking at it, I can't address the specifics of the intersection.
Well, the road goes into a new subdivision, and it comes down a hill, and there's a yield sign, and a lot of times they just turn really quick, and I just was, we, we thought if you put a stop sign in, they'll slow it down a little bit more, because you, in the summertime, you have a lot of bikes, and you have a lot of youngsters around there, four or so will have a buggles in the street or something, so, we just noticed that the traffic's going a little bit faster through the neighborhood now because of that yield sign.
If, if you can give me the street names of the intersection?
Glen Meadows Dry.
Okay, Glen Meadows.
And it comes into Norchester Dry Street. It's actually right by my house.
That's the transition between Glen Meadows and Eagle Heights?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to take a look at it, I, I will tell you ahead of time that just to slow traffic down is not a warrant for changing a yield sign to a stop sign.
Well, stop, I'm just worrying about the young children in that area.
But I'll certainly be willing to take a look at it.
I appreciate that, thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Carl, three-ninety Lennox. Uh, just wanna make a couple of quick comments here, uh, regarding, uh, our, uh, major excavation on the north end of town here, okay, uh, for those of you that don't know a little bit about it, uh, it started out as something very small. Uh, I lived in that complex for a period of years, okay, somewhere in oh-two, oh-three, oh-four, somewhere in there, and I remember that little sinkhole that was there way back when, okay? And what seemed to be rather benign and unobs, you know, unnoticedable, gradually, it's, it's a miracle that somebody started noticing it a little more, and, uh, it started getting a little bigger, a little bit here and there, and, uh, our DBW were alerted to it, and they had the presence of mind to fill it up with some dirt, you know, and kept watching it, and it gradually kept getting bigger and bigger. And, uh, it's a credit, and hats off to our DPW that they kept on this, because what may have seemed on the surface like a rather, like I said, benign and not too big a problem because after all, water wasn't squirting out of the ground, you know, and, uh, there was a big manhole right next door, it was right in open area in a, where grass is mowed and easy to get to just from here to that desk from off the sidewalk, and, uh, thank goodness, everybody had the presence of mind and the moxie and the tenacity to make an excavation and exploratory, see what we really had there. When we got down to the bottom, okay, it turned out we had a big problem, and, uh, I've been up there four times, took a few pictures, uh, and it's probably pretty well under control and being filled in probably most part today. Okay, this was a serious deal, whatever our buddies at HRC choose to charge us on this one, it's worth it, and I don't, I don't give that allocate lightly, uh, this was a serious matter, it could have, if it had gone further, if it had been ignored, easily to have done so, we could have had a much larger, more costly disaster, and, uh, thank good, goodness for the Rose Excavating Company in town were able to jump on this and had the know-how and the machinery to go deep enough to get something like this done in a short time, and the connections to get the pipe, which isn't too common to come by, to fix this, also the luck that we've had good weather, mother nature gave us a little bit of a break to fix this, this problem, before we get, uh, normal, normal February weather, and, uh, a ver, a much worse disaster, really. Now, whatever the final tally is on this job, you may be uncomfortable with, maybe not, but whatever it is, it was well worth it, because I've done sewer work once upon a time, and, uh, if that went, if that went untaken care of, okay, we could have been in a big, much more costly problem down the road, on that subject. On the second subject, just quick, uh, one of the gentlemen who's an octogenarian of town, and that doesn't exclude Mr. Lane, Mr. Lane is one of the oldest people in town that was born in town, uh, very noteworthy in that regard. A fellow that retired from the tube mill probably thirty years ago named Michael Brenovich, you might not know the name, but some of you would know, some of members of the family over the years, he turns a hundred years old this Wednesday, on the tenth, and I personally went to their seventieth wedding anniversary, him and his wife, they're both still alive, I think it's notable, the city should be notified of this, okay? And, uh, his wife is the last survivor that I know of, who actually worked in the tube mill and took them over some of the men's jobs during World War Two. She was a, uh, she was one of the ladies that was called into service during the course of World War Two. I believe they're both in a nursing home at this time, but they lived right down Liberty Street forever, and then Colonial Acres for many years, and, uh, I thought the name because of their children, and they've all been a notable family, I thought it should be mentioned, because not too many guys that ever retired from the tube mill lived to be a hundred from that place. Anyway, hats off to Bob and his crew, they did a marvelous and fantastic job on this, working hand in hand in a dangerous situation with the Rose Company. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I wanna say something to Bob, I was out there Thursday, the weather was bad Thursday, and, uh, and then Friday, and I wanna say the same thing, I'm sure he's gonna let us know how things went, but those guys did a really good job, from what I could see, you know, I mean, I was amazed how deep the hole was, how far, how big that hole was, I had no idea it was gonna get like that, and to see how they handled it, especially with that back hole and everything, Rose Excavating held what they did and everything, and Bob's guys, hats, Carl's right, hats off to you guys, I mean, you did a great, great job, so.
Hey John, Ryan Lehrer, seventh and nineteenth grand court, I'm up here this, uh, last council meeting before, a week from today, we'll be closing the Holocaust exhibit at the Silver Sides Museum, and was just coming up to remind you, or remind the public, that uh, we are still looking for donations for the Luminary Bags to put out for the Holocaust victims, and, um, we will be having a speaker from the World Federation of Jewish Child Survivors and the Holocaust Survivors, will be giving a presentation at six o'clock, so please come down to the museum if you're able to get away and see the lecture and learn about the survivors, it's seven dollars, if you're a member, it's free, and, um, you learn a lot, and you can also call the museum at, uh, two-three-one-seven-five-five-one-two-three-zero, or go to silver sides museum dot org, and you can donate there for the bag if you can't make it, and you wanna donate a bag for your family in honor of the Holocaust, please feel free to call the museum, and if not, it'll be Monday at six o'clock for the thing, I will be there, and I will be giving tours, so if anybody does come up, you can ask for me, I will be there. Thank you. Oh, and hats off to you, Bob, I did drive by, I was driving through there, wonderful job your guys were doing, and didn't stop traffic or anything, wonderful job, echo the same way with John and Carl.
Okay, just move on to old business. Number one, consider the approval of the second reading of the Dangerous Building Ordinance.
Okay, this is our second reading, we had the first reading last, uh, meeting, um, there were several revisions that are summarized at the top of your agenda note, their first one is in section eighteen dash four oh-three, clarifying that the owner, agent, and occupants are responsible for taking action to prevent building or structure from becoming a dangerous building. In section eighteen four oh-seven, subletter C, revision to clarify consistent use of terms, and in section eighteen four dash, eighteen dash four eleven, revisions changing violation of the ordinance to misdemeanor rather than a mis municipal civil infraction. And I will hand this over to Tim, if you've got any other questions.
Uh, I just wanted to highlight the two additional points of information, uh, council member Kurt Swillett asked about whether the Dangerous Building Ordinance would apply to mobile homes within parks, uh, at this point, my answer would be no. Uh, it would apply to modular manufactured and mobile homes that are not within a park. The park is the trigger that apply, makes the, triggers the Mobile Home Commission Act, which is subject to state regulation, has its own set of administrative rules, and there may be ways that we could, uh, you do have some rights to go seek injunctive relief through Circuit Court, uh, we also, anecdotally, I asked around the off, my office, and some communities, given the cutbacks at the state level, are getting, uh, approval from the Mobile Home Commission to enforce their own ordinances, whether it's dangerous building or IMPC, IPMC, and other ordinances against, uh, as to mobile home parks within their communities, so that may be an option. There's also a statutory procedure where you can submit your regulate, proposed regulations and get approval through the commission. And, uh, on that, that point, there is one other point, but I can address that after.
Thank you.
You know, I did a little bit of research on this, and, and the only thing, and I didn't spend a lot of time, but the distinction that sort of seemed to be out there was that a dangerous building is something that is affixed to the land, to the land, and when you talk about a, a mobile home, that is something that is not affixed to the land, because it, it rises above the ground, um, and it, so it's not necessarily fitting the definition of maybe a dangerous building, that's, that was, one person I spoke to sort of said, be careful of your definitions in your, um, ordinances, because the definition of a mobile home does not necessarily fit the definition of a building, just, just because of the foundation issue, so I don't know if that's any help for you or not.
I, I looked at that issue, the, this, this ordinance is designed to apply to both building and structures, so it would be, say there was a shed, or, you know, I, I think we could get at other things that may fall into the category of a dangerous structure, and, um, really, I thought the trigger was the fact that it's in a park, because that's the statutory trigger that places everything within the state's jurisdiction as opposed to our own, so, the idea that a, if you were to wheel a trailer, a mobile home, or a manufactured home on wheels onto an independent lot that's not in a park, I think our ordinance applies, because it is a structure, and theoretically it may fit the definition of a building as well, so, I really think the statutory framework is what keeps that Dangerous Building Ordinance from applying in this circumstance.
And, and you're probably right, you know, you're probably very right about that. Okay, thanks.
So, the, the other, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the other point was the, uh, council member Kivell had asked about the unreasonable repairs provision, uh, this, the explanation in the agenda note provides some additional clarification. The first step would be, the hearing officer would have to determine that the cost of the repairs exceeds a hundred percent of the true cash value of the structure or building on the tax roll before it became a dangerous structure. You would also have to have the city asking for demolition at that, at that point, your hearing officer makes that determination, then the formula fits, it, it becomes presumed to be a public nuisance and demolish, and demolition would occur, if you've requested that remedy, would occur without an option for the owner to repair. That would be essentially the, the order of the hearing officer, if we're presuming that. You also then have to go through the city council procedure if there's non-compliance, at which point the council can approve, modify, or reject, or reverse the order of the hearing officer. So, there's a, by formula, there's a formula in there for determining what is considered to be an unreasonable repair. There is some discretion in the city to decide whether you really want the building to come down, and that would be both at the front end by the administration, when you seek and go to a hearing, the hearing officer has to reach that conclusion, and then it would likely have to come before council unless the owner were to comply with what the city asked for and that the hearing officer determined as an order. So, long and short, it's not mandatory, is the long and short of it.
Yeah, I'm completely satisfied that that, that protects us, yeah.
Just to be clear, there are no language changes other than the, adding the word structure, I believe, were the only modifications to that language, so there, I'm, I really, because that's being used and pulled from the Brighton Ordinance, which was litigated in Bonner versus Brighton, I didn't really want to make any changes, and I'm not making anything other than consistency terminology changes in that section of the ordinance.
Anyone?
I'll make the motion then that we approve the, uh, second reading of the Dangerous Building Ordinance.
I'll support it. Motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Still?
Nice job, Tim.
To an old business, consider approval of the second reading of the ordinance to adopt the two thousand twelve International Property Maintenance Code.
And I will turn this one over to Tim as well.
This one should be short and sweet, uh, this is the second reading, there were no revisions, there were no comments, no questions from council, so the recommendation would be to approve the second reading and adopt the, I, two thousand twelve International Property Maintenance Code.
Make that motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, you tell.
In two quick moments, we've just really substantially bolstered our position to be able to, uh, address concerns in the city.
Excuse me, under new business, um, consider applications to city commissions, we got one here for, uh-
Marcia Callas.
Yeah, Marcia Callas, she's been seventeen-year-old, seventeen-year resident, she went to South Lyon High School, has a degree from University of Eastern Michigan, she's an interior designer, I think she'd be a great asset to have to our community, not only she's from South Lyon, which it sounds like, and another one coming back to, uh, stay here and do something for us and bring some new young blood to the city and maybe some fresh ideas, so- So I think she'd be a great, great addition to the DDA.
How many seats are left available?
After this, we have one vacant seat.
So that's your motion to appoint needs a second, and I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Marcia.
She's not here this evening. Kelly can get you.
That's exactly what I was doing. Thank you.
New business, number two, consider the final approval of acceptance in the dedication of the sanitary sewer and water utilities and easements for Lexington Place condominium and a request for the release of the cash surety bond.
This is something that Tim and I have been working on with the DPW and HRC for several months, actually closer to a year along with several other developments. We've finally gotten all of the necessary paperwork in place to follow the city's policies and procedures for utility dedications. And this one does have a hundred thousand dollar cash surety bond in a separate bank account that the developer had placed as, when they purchased the development out of receivership. So any legal questions, I will turn over to Tim, but we have received all of the proper paperwork. All of the inspections have been done, any repairs have been done, and we are ready to take on these utilities.
Mayor Galison, council, the, the only thing I will highlight is I included the, or included in the packet and behind the agenda note is the policy and the checklist. We've received items satisfying the, all four items on the checklist from both the developer and the condominium association. The only, there was a wrinkle in this regarding five streetlights that was associated or required under the 2010 court order. After chasing down many loose ends and wild goose chases, it seemed like on this, the conclusion is the city approved an amended site plan for this development that eliminated the five streetlights. So the, the final wearing course is in, the five streetlights are not required, the hundred thousand dollars can be released. And all the documentation regarding the easements and bill of sale are in order and HRC has signed off as well.
Everything's perfectly appropriate. I make the motion that we accept the dedication of Lexington Place condominium's utilities and release of the surety bond.
A second?
Motion, have a second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Is it acceptable to do that in one motion?
I think so.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
Good work cracking that down. I mean, that little, from the original PD to, you know, where we are now, stuff gets, you know, kind of policy that cracks at times, so.
Okay, Lynn, we have you added the agreement with the use of us.
Yes, I spoke to both the Foundation Directory online as well as ECIVUS. The Foundation Directory only handles private foundations, private and public foundations. It doesn't handle any state and local grants. And the cost on that would be eighteen hundred dollars per year. When I met with and had a online demonstration with ECIVUS, their program not only does the same research that the Foundation Directory does, but it does it for federal and state and foundation grants. It provides you pre-award services, helping you find the grants, helping you write the grants, notifying you of deadlines that are coming up. And then it also includes post-award services that notify you of any paperwork that has to be filed, when those deadlines are, and sends you constant alerts. This agreement would give us a two-user license, so two people could be on the system at the same time. It, it's by far the best. And while at forty nine hundred dollars a year, it is within my spending authority because it is a three-year agreement. I wanted the city council to see it and approve it before anything was moved forward on.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I actually have two questions for you. So in researching, did you see any other programs similar to this?
I did see other programs that were similar, but they were more expensive.
Okay. And then, in your opinion, did you think that this was ultimately helpful? Like if you were going to, if we adopt this program and bring it into our facilities, this would be something that would be helpful? Like in your opinion, how do you feel about this?
It'll be very helpful. Rather, rather than having to go out to the federal registry, which is where you have to track down federal grants now, this, you just put in keywords for the types of grants or a subject area that you're searching for and tell them what state you're in, and it'll pull up anything from the state, the local, and federal and the private foundations and give you a single list to look at.
That sounds great. I like that it's user-friendly and honestly, I think forty nine hundred is, I mean, incredibly affordable for what you're going to get back out of this. Did you touch base with Kelly and see what she thought about this? Because I know she has the grant running experience too.
Yeah, she's, she's worked with them before. They actually also work with the cities of Berkeley, Berlin, Claussen, and one other community, I think it's mentioned in their paperwork, in the state of Michigan currently, and do their grant assistance.
Because my, my only concern would be you and Kelly will be utilizing this system the most because of your skills.
Right.
So as long as you have, you feel comfortable with it, I'm all on board with it. And it sounds like, I said, user-friendly and it's not that expensive. So I'm all on board.
It's very usually friendly. Any department head, any department will actually be able to go in and if they come up with a grant, they can bring it to Kelly and I and then we can help them or write the grants for them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
My question is regarding how much the extent of the assistance in actually applying for the grant.
They give you copies of past grants that have been awarded as part of it. They will review your application for you so they can give you pointers on where you can strengthen your application. They help you, as I said, narrow down the grants that you're applying for based on the specific need that you're looking for. And then the post-award stuff is extremely important because with Davis Bacon and the Frank Dodd rules, there's a lot of paperwork that has to be filed and it has to be filed in a timely manner and the proper manner once you get a state or a federal grant. And so that will significantly reduce having what you would consider outside grant administrators doing the work for us.
Okay, but essentially, we're still writing the grant.
We're still writing the grants, yes.
All right, thank you.
So I realize this is time-sensitive, so we need to, I mean, if we all agree upon this, move before the twenty second, correct?
The, the pricing is locked in until February 22nd, otherwise it goes up to sixty nine hundred dollars a year.
When can we implement it if it is approved?
As soon as we sign the contract and submit it, we would have access to the system.
Okay, excellent.
Maggie?
One of the key features that I noticed on here that I keep hearing, and I'll go through it in that when I have a couple pointers in the downtown area, is this access to best practices. I mean, that seems to be really, really important, only because it, it will give you, I, I don't know how this particular company will do it, but in, when you're out there looking for grants in the past, best practices sort of let you know, you know, what is the best use of the grant, what is the best, and it gives you statistical data as to prior grantees that have used it and their success rate. So I really think as you're evaluating particular grants, I, I, this feature right here, access to best practices, I think that's just a real key component for you to have. I agree. And having access to successfully awarded grants gives you an idea of what different grant organizations are really looking for when they're giving that money.
Ms. Jen? I'm a little disappointed that we're getting this at the 11th hour. I don't know what was driving that, but this seems like it, it was important enough that we should have had a little bit more time to glean what was in this document than just before our meeting started. Do you have some sample targets that you would like to immediately start to search for?
Well, I'm going to start immediately, obviously, on parks grant because the Parks and Rec Department are looking for grants. Transportation, to see what we can do for our streets and roads. Any kind of downtown business grants that we can use to help our downtown businesses as well as our other community businesses, maybe get funding through the city as a pass-through grant to help them improve their businesses. So those are my three primary targets.
Okay. And the, you said that the price goes to sixty nine hundred a year after the twenty seventh?
Sixty nine hundred a year after the 22nd, yes.
Yeah.
John? So I have a few questions. First of all, I think this is long overdue and I, I want to commend you for bringing this before us because this is going to be a great asset for what will hopefully be a lot of grants coming in. What, a couple of things I saw that stood out that was, I think it's going to be very helpful, is under some of these points, it says a Google-like search with the ability for keyword match and geographic filtering. This would be very helpful for us to say, for example, Parks and Rec, you can type that in and be able to go after exactly what you want. The other thing I was thinking of how we can utilize this is previously funded application library, our collection of more than 700 winning grant applications that you can reference when preparing your grant application. I think this could be a really hidden gem that you can use. For example, if you found somebody that had a similar grant, we know what, what government they're from or what state or wherever they're from, you could reach out to them.
Right.
And, and maybe get some pointers from them. So just a way, a little suggestion that I, I think I would maybe help in your efforts towards this. And then also, just curious, with the software, will Kelly have the same access as you or?
There will actually be two, what I consider generic South Lion user accounts so that anybody can get on it, and we can have two users on the system at the same time. So Kelly and I will have the same access. The police department will be able to access it. They'll have the user links and logins, the fire department, DVW, water, wastewater. So everybody can do it. It allows us to have two people on the system at the same time.
Yeah, another helpful thing I, I read here was where you can actually put in keywords and it'll send you email updates.
Yes.
So we're, for, again, parks, you can just get a, right away, an email that tells you that maybe a new grant came up. So overall, I'm all for this. I think this is a great proposal. So thank you, Lynn, for bringing this before us.
Mr. Mayor, along those same lines, I know you said earlier at the very beginning that there's email updates with deadlines. There should be absolutely no reason that, that we miss a grant or something important like that, like a.
Right.
Something that could, the city could really utilize. So if we implement this system, I think there's no reason for anything to slip through the cracks.
The only reason I can see for us to miss deadlines is if they're grants that, as we're just coming on to the system, the deadlines are such a short period of time that we can't get the paperwork together to do it.
Okay. Well, hopefully we can get you in a system, right? Working on it.
So update, how updated is the?
They update, they update the system daily and so you can choose either daily or weekly updates and it'll send you any new or revisions to anything that's on the federal registry, the state grant sites, and the foundations.
Out of curiosity, what was the price difference? I know you said that you looked at other ones and they were much more expensive. Can you just throw a ballpark number out there of what you've seen?
The next one was fifty five hundred, another one was seventy five hundred.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Would these updates end up being things that you've done searches for or would they just be anything that was new that was thrown into the system?
Anything that the new hits the database.
Okay. That, I mean, just.
That way, if, if there's something you're not particularly looking for, but you see that there's a grant out there that you could use, you find it and you can start writing for it.
I can see that being beneficial and I can see it being problematic. I mean, it, like email, you know, when you get a host of ads for whatever, it's like, for heaven's sakes, how did you get my name?
That's why they let you give the opportunity of a daily or a weekly email.
I know the feeling.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't see a whole lot of negative to this at all. I mean, any, this is going to be a great benefit in my mind to enhance the opportunity for us to grab some of these grants that are available that we may or may not have known about. And as everybody else has said, I think, being able to look at some of the other winning grants and reach out to some of those communities that have received those grants will be huge for us in a sense. So I, and in my mind, I think it's a great, great tool.
Hey, John? Oh, sorry, sorry, I was just, had one more question. Is there really any communities that are not using this or similar software? I just want to know how far.
Actually, there is a lot of communities that don't use anything like this at all. Most of them do it by hand and just check the federal registry and try and do a research or they go through their engineering firm to bring them grants because engineering firms usually use services like this.
Right.
So there's only, I would say maybe 50% of the communities nationwide that use a system like this.
That's still pretty high. I'm surprised for forty nine hundred, there's not more that are taking advantage. And in fact, I'll take it a step further. When you go on the conference, you know, maybe this is something you can discuss and bounce off other managers and maybe develop a partnership, something like that.
Do you see there being any time concerns with your being able to, you know, take the time to, to do this search?
Well, that's why the next idea is.
I was hoping that might be linked.
Yes, and that's why the two of them are linked.
Your transition.
Even though I think that Kelly, you know, she could probably capitalize on using her time more effectively in this, I, it's not as though she doesn't have an awful lot of stuff going on too, but, but I think she would probably be a little bit more, less distracted by a host of other things than you might end up having on your plate, that's all.
All right, I'll make the motion then that we authorize the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with ECIVUS for pre and post award grant services at a cost of four thousand nine hundred dollars per year.
Per year. Second?
For three years.
For three years.
You have a motion, you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And it's a great, anything to speed up, I mean, everything is going so fast now, you know? And I know if only 50% of the communities are using it, it just, I puts us in a better spot, I think. I mean, I, I mean, we're all competing for these grants. We're all competing, you know, so if we can get a much easier way to find out what's available and then get some inside information in a sense by looking at how some grants were awarded before for one meter particular, I don't see any negative. I think it's going to be great for the city. So I hope you guys really utilize this tool. Okay, next one, Lynn?
Well, this segues from, directly from that. I brought forward to you at the January 11th meeting, bringing on a part-time person for 20 hours a week to help the city clerk, treasurer, and myself with administrative duties, the election duties, the front counter, with the amount of elections that we're doing as well as the need to do additional grant writing. I'd like permission from the council to begin advertising for someone to fill that position. It's going to be a difficult position because it's going to be, you need to be somebody that we can have handle confidential information within the city, but I think we can find someone very well qualified to work with Lisa and I.
I have a, John? Well, question would be, actually, would it be, who would be taking part in the interview? Would it be yourself and Lisa or would it be just you?
Yes, both Lisa and I would be participating in the interview.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because if they're going to be working directly with, especially the election stuff, it's going to, I know you're heavily involved, but so was Lisa, so I just wanted to say that. And also, like I said before, I'm, I'm all in favor of this. I think it's going to free up some, some time. I, I was kind of baffled when I, when I read that, that you were actually putting together the packets. So I think that's absolutely something that we should be diverting your energy from, the city council packets, also the Facebook updates or checking that. We can certainly give that to somebody else.
Right.
In the office. And one thing I would like to see is just kind of some, I know it's kind of outlined here where it says what we're going to have them do, but maybe more of a job description.
Lisa and I will have to put together a job description before we put the ad together. That way we know what we're looking for before we write the ad.
And then one final point would be, you know, if, I don't know what the other staffing is at the other departments, but certainly I would hope that if they needed something similar, that we would also extend that kind of courtesy to, I don't know, the police or the fire or even water department, if they were shorthanded, that we'd be helping them out as well, so.
Definitely.
Does person be able to do like updates on the city website?
They'd be able to do updates on the city website. They'd be able to handle some of the social media or free up other people with time for to do the social media updates, things like that, yes. And then fill in when we have absences in the building, secretary, the water wastewater secretary, the DBW secretary. Probably not so much with the police department because of the security clearances that that would be required, but definitely able to help with all the other departments as well.
Mr. Mayor, I have something. So I know you had just touched base about a description of their job title and what you would like to see in an assistant. However, is there a chance that you could email that to us?
Certainly.
And we can take a look at it because I thought there was discrepancy at the January eleventh meeting where there was degrees or no degrees and what we were trying to figure out for an assistant. Because I think Councilman Kramer had mentioned-
We were talking about degrees for the community development and the economic development. For an administrative assistant, I'd like it to be somebody that at least has an associate's degree.
Okay. Okay.
And because you're going to handle some sensitive, more sensitive information.
Right, I just didn't know what the actual description was going to be. So if we could just get a copy of it?
Certainly. As Lisa and I get it developed, we'll send it out before we put the ad together.
Cool.
One other thing would be good is, this will give you some temporary relief, but I also don't want to lose sight of the getting in an intern. Because I know, at least when I was in college, any minimum wage for something you put on your resume was, getting paid for was a bonus. So I'm sure there's going to be with all the schools around here, community colleges and Eastern and even U of M, there's, has to be plenty of people that would be qualified and willing to help, so.
How long do you think it would be before you post this?
Depending upon how long it takes, Lisa and I put the job description together, I would like to have it posted in the next ten days.
Okay, that's great.
All right, well, I'll make the motion since I'm on a roll. We authorize or we allow the city manager to advertise for a part-time administrative assistant for the city manager and the clerk treasurer.
Second?
Motion, you have a second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. We move on to our outstanding topics that we always have. I don't know if anybody has anything to talk about here. I think we, one thing I think was we've handled, as Councilman Kibble said, in one full swoop tonight, we've kind of really made a dent on how we're attacking some of these issues in the city now, which is not, we're going to stand missing for a long time. So with that, Maggie, you said you had something?
This is on the downtown area. I had a couple of topics. First of all, I wanted to let everyone, or at least the businesses, ask me, five businesses that I spoke with during the past two weeks asked me to convey to city council that they are extremely appreciative of every comment that city council makes regarding the business community, whether it's constructive criticism or whatever it is. As one business owner told me, said, you know, Maggie, we understand we're in transition and transition means a lot of things. And that means that there's going to be a lot of constructive comments that are coming out, constructive criticism. In fact, I think that the business owners are beginning to email one another and it includes not only businesses in the DDA, but I spoke to two businesses down on Pontiac Trail that are beginning to participate in the discussion. They're looking at ways to renovate their business, do some things that maybe they haven't done in a couple of years, maybe ten years. So I think that there is this energy that is beginning to develop and we probably don't see the big picture of what's going on, but at least the businesses, I said, strongly encourage city council to keep coming to the table with suggestions, keep, 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 keep doing it because they are very, very happy about it. The second point is, is I had an opportunity to speak with Joe Gruber. He is the new, very, very dynamic young man, DDA director of the YNDA DDA. And I spoke to him about grants and this is just something I'm going to toss out. And, you know, just, I'm just going to sort of paint the canvas a little bit. I'm not going to get into a lot of the details of it. We didn't talk that long. But basically what YNDA has been doing is they take about ten percent of their DDA budget and they take that money and they put it into grants, about forty thousand dollars of grants. And what they do is they say to the DDA, here's forty thousand dollars and they have a website that you can download all the forms and you can apply for a grant. And when you apply for the grant, you have to, the grant can be used to improve your facade and the grant can be used to improve the interior of your business. And he said about every year they are spending about forty thousand dollars a year, the DDA is back into their community in the form of these grants. You can do modifications of what YNDA does. We don't have to follow the YNDA model, but it's a concept of being able to get money into the DDA. Now, the DDA may not have the money for it, so I would just say maybe we might want to think about funding these grants. So if the DDA came up with the forms and came up with the idea and said, here are the grants that we would like that until they get on their feet, then city council would finance those grants maybe for two years. So maybe we kick in fifteen thousand a year. The DDA would then screen the applicants. The DDA would, would look at the individuals and what they are trying to do. YNDA is pretty tight on this in terms of how they control it. And one of the things that Joe told me, and I do have his phone number, if anybody wants it, you could call him. His phone number is seven three four three two four four five oh seven. He was an absolutely dynamic young man to speak with. He said that what you don't want to do is get in the position where you're funding somebody's improvements on their property because that's using taxpayer dollar to improve a private investment. So YNDA requires a formula where the owner or the tenant has to come to the table with maybe sixty percent of the money, seventy percent of the money, whatever, and then they'll, then they'll provide it. He said most of their grants are about five thousand dollars that they're giving and they've been doing this for years. So that's just an option. Quick, easy, the, you know, city council funds it for a couple of years and see if there's any interest in it. The next thing is, I'm moving on to PA two-ten. And Glenn, I got to thank you for drawing that attention with the industrial tax abatement program. There is a distinction between the industrial tax abatement program and PA Public Act two-ten, which was just extended this year. It's called the Commercial Rehab Act. I spoke with, I'm not, again, that's a very detailed kind of thing. There's a lot of hoops that you need to jump through. The woman I spoke to was Heather Cole, phenomenal individual at the state, just phenomenal. She knew this stuff inside and out. And I emailed everyone on city council with the website, with all the forms, with the state and the contact. Heather Cole, her phone number is five one seven three seven three two four oh eight. And this is another tool that the city could use. And what the city does is the city forms the commercial rehab district. So we would form the district and once the district is formed, then anybody living in that district would then apply for commercial rehab under PA two-ten and apply for the tax exemption. What's great about the state is that once again, this applies to interior work. So if somebody wanted to revamp the inside of their business, they could get a tax exemption providing that they kick in a certain amount of money. So I'm just throwing, if people are interested, we can put it on and look for further things. The next thing is, and I just want to spend, and this is an idea that, you know, we'll see where it goes. I don't know if it'll go anywhere, but it's an idea and you got to keep bringing these ideas to the table. I just wanted to disclose that I do know Dennis Dubach and I've litigated against Dennis at least once and I've done quite well. And he's a great guy. He's a real, real decent attorney. But I know him professionally. I don't know him personally, like on a real social level. And John, I know that you know Dennis, you know, on a personal level and a social level. And so I'm just going to throw this out here. This is just throwing stuff out. I think with the Art Craft Building, in all fairness to Mr. Bonner, you know, when I stand back and look at it, you know, Mr. Bonner must say, what am I supposed to do with this building? You know, what am I supposed to do with this building? You want me to fix it up, but what am I fixing it up for? So here's an idea, this is just an idea, is the recent history of the Art Craft Building, as I understand it, was an art store. And the woman that was in it was an artist, I think, Atkinson?
Carlene Atchison, yeah.
Was she an actual artist? That's what I heard, that she actually was an artist.
Her husband was the manager of Lion Township.
Lion Township, same.
Supervisor, I should say.
Okay. So, so here's the suggestion. So if you and Denny could broker a deal with Mr. Bonner and that deal would be that Mr. Bonner would lease the Art Craft Building back to the city for twenty-five years at a nominal rent. We, in turn, the city, would then lease it to the Culture Arts Commission. And we would start a two-year capital campaign to raise funds, whether we go to, you know, GoFundMe or whatever, raise the funds. It's going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars to go in there. And what we could do is we could turn that building into an art gallery, an art center and put it to a public use. Maybe that's what could happen with the Art Craft Building. Now, if we don't meet the funding, we don't meet the funding, but at least you'd have the documents in place where he agrees not, get an exclusive option, where he agrees not to lease it out, not to do anything and gives us maybe two years to raise the funds. I think in that way, what we've done is you turn it into an art gallery, the arts can use it. They can exhibit there. You can have poetry readings there. You can have book signings there. And I think this is a win-win situation because actually Mr. Bonner could, if we got the funding, could jumpstart the revitalization in the downtown. I mean, how incredible that he could actually lead a revitalization by giving us hope that that Art Craft Building could go to a public person. And I'm telling you, that building would be used by the Culture Arts Commission. You could call it the Bonner Culture Art Center on the outside. I mean, you could do it, but you turn this into a win-win for everybody. And we would, we would raise private funds. It's just an idea and it would be for the Culture Arts Commission. So that's it for my thoughts on the downtown.
I have a couple of comments. Actually, I emailed everybody that there's three, three abatements that the state offers. Commercial Development Act, which is Public Act two fifty-five, the Commercial Rehab Act, that is that two-ten that Maggie had talked about, and Obsolete Property Rehab Act, that is PA one forty-six. They're all something that, I would hate the idea of not considering them. I don't, I'm a little bit trepidatious about the idea of pursuing, giving relief of tax money. We're in kind of an odd position right now because if that were the seed that it took to really inspire people to start to invest in downtown, I would gladly end up foregoing somebody's return on the taxes there for a short term. And I mean, the terms are between one and twelve years, one and ten for, for I think the Rehab Act and one and twelve for Redevelopment Act. But I, there's a couple of things that I think are difficult. Giving relief to somebody in lieu of all those that have worked very hard to end up keeping their businesses alive without the assistance of getting tax relief, that's a difficult argument to justify, I suppose. But as I said, if that were the seed that would trigger, like the redevelopment one to me in particular because that's a more grand-scale, comprehensive type of change. If you could do it on a managed level, I think that that, that might end up being a really valuable tool. I had the good fortune of, the Mrs. Steinecker that had come in here and she spoke to the idea of us not, not going with Burns Law Firm and she had mentioned in her, her letter to the editor that she had gotten an email from a councilperson from City of Brighton that had suggested that he hadn't heard of Blightbusters and that wasn't a, certainly not a commonly used term. It was identified in that, that little letter that it was a councilwoman. It actually turned out to be a gentleman named James Bone that's on city council there. I had given all of you copies of that correspondence and Mr. Bone was really, really nice in providing a pretty, pretty nice overview of what they're, how they had been pursuing things. But one of the most important things that I had enjoyed about that was a man named Matt Modrick, that their community development director and their DDA director had, he said he was essentially the architect of where Brighton is right now. That in conjunction with their, their shopping, I forgot what that, that term is. It's like a DDA for a shopping area.
It's a PSD, a Public Shopping District.
That's correct, yes. Those two entities, the DDA, that shopping area thing and their Chamber of Commerce have all walked in lockstep to try to pursue, pursue some real constructive changes that have taken place in Brighton. Well, I went to meet him on Friday, thinking that I could end up picking his brain for fifteen, twenty minutes. He and his assistant, Michelle Miller, put me in a car and drove me around the town for an hour and a half explaining in no uncertain detail the ME, ME DC grants that they were able to procure for these businesses that are especially in the Main Street downtown. You know, a hundred and eighty thousand here, seventy-four thousand there. And I mean, it was all facade work, but the, the change was really monumental. And what, I don't know, I just, I thought that that was so cool and they're, they're not even close to slowing down. They've got stuff, you know, with the U of M hospital that's going to be taking place there. They've got five hotels that are going in, in that area. It was very, very interesting and the, the connection with Bonner, Mrs. Steinecker had suggested that there hadn't been a really comprehensive structural review of that building prior to its demolition. And I had asked about that and they said essentially, the excavator bumped them and they just crumbled. So I don't think that it was, there was an awful lot left there to be able to salvage, so. But, but as far as their being able to get parking lots, there's some incredibly creative ways. They've, they've done these contract purchases of properties. They've raised terrible buildings and turned them into gravel parking lots and they have some kind of an ordinance where they have three years to either turn it into a parking lot or do something, or sell it, I guess it is. And what they've done is they've taken that contracted land, leased it to the adjoining property businesses and allowed them to use that for parking as sort of a placeholder for down the road. And I thought, what a clever idea, especially with the ones that aren't right on the main drag. This is like one street over. And having a gravel lot, a well-maintained gravel lot, it's not just like a mud hole or anything. But I just thought that was a really clever approach to do some transitional placeholding for something that ultimately will hold a building down the road. And I also wanted to come, I'd be more than happy when, he's getting some information for me from Oakland County Main Street. He's got a connection with their director that he thought might end up being beneficial to us as well as his contact at ME DC. And Lynn has suggested that there, the state has really gutted their budget. So maybe that won't end up being quite as valuable as it's been to Brighton, but I'd still like to try to form relationships with those people. I wanted to comment on your, your idea with Leon. I mean, I think that any kind of functional use is certainly in a step, a step in the right direction. But personally, I don't know if there's some way to spin your idea to, to be able to, like if you could rest the building from Leon to allow something constructive to take place there under those same terms even, if we could be a party to putting it out for an RFP for some business. I would much rather see some taxes generated from that location plus the, I like the foot traffic idea of the art gallery thing, but I think a business, of the right fit of business would end up generating more traffic is all. And we would get the benefit of taxes, so. But I thought that's a nice, out of the box kind of spin on how we can take a look at that building. And if Dennis, if he'd entertain the idea of talking to Leon about that, I would, I would be very happy to support that.
Glenn, for doing what you just did, that was great. I mean, it was like, this is kind of the things I was talking about, about looking at our surrounding communities, specifically Brighton, because it's so obvious what they've done.
It's all on them. I mean, like I said, I went to have a conversation and they were so gracious. It was really wonderful.
You know, that's great. So it's, that's, this is the kind of things that we've been trying to get to. As it gets back to Dennis, I want us, I think we're getting closer to- As it gets back to Dennis, I want to, I think we're getting closer to maybe having a meeting, maybe, you know, it sounds like. So, you know, if we can do that, like I told Lynn, we're already closer to somewhere we haven't been. So, and I am friends with Dennis socially, and not so much doing work with him anymore, but I understand him a little bit, and I, you know, I don't know. I think that's a great idea, I think it's a great opportunity to try to do something that maybe hasn't been tried, you know, so, yeah.
Glenn, did they give you any timetable? Did Brighton talk about how long it took? Did they, I mean, did they say, "We've got five years of projects on," I mean, what's...
Oh, they've got all of that. It's remarkable how quickly, once they make a call on something, it's going. I mean, full steam ahead, it's just crazy. They've got some company that does, like catalytic converters or something, and it's going to be an entire factory that is like robotic stuff. And it was like, yeah, we agreed to it, boom, they built the building. I mean, it's in the process of being built, and it'll be online in a year or something. It's just nuts how quickly those turnarounds are. So, yeah, but they've got a whole bunch of stuff, from that grand-scale stuff all the way to that same area is poorly serviced for walkability, so now they're trying to focus on how do we get safe passage from one area through that Grand River Corridor and all to get downtown. So, it's just really neat that their scope is so broad, and yet really cleverly detailed as well. So, they've capitalized on every opportunity that they've had a chance to, so. And the cool part, I think, that we can take heart in is, once the inertia starts moving forward, everybody gets on board, and the conflicts and trying to have prohibitive behavior to do something constructive really kind of seems to fall away. It's not as though you never have naysayers or anything, that's just a, you know, the...
Back to life.
Yeah, exactly. But nonetheless, I mean, once they started seeing this, I asked him, "What was your first project of note?" And it was those, as Lynn calls them, the hawk signals, the crosswalk, lights in the street there, right at downtown. That was the thing that kind of got them started, and it's just been a whirlwind ever since. So, they want to build a theater in town. This is Matt's personal pet project. He hasn't gotten buy-in from everybody quite yet, but he seems rather tenacious, and I got a feeling they'll have a theater before long. I wanted to ask, or to add one other thing, and I think that we need to, and this'll certainly come up in, maybe in our session, our group session, or whatever the heck that thing's called, the retreat. But expanding our DTA, I think, is absolutely necessary. When you look at Brighton's scenario, their DDA is about the size of all but four backyards in someone's yard. It's just crazy, the footprint that their DDA consumes, so. But we're really antiquated, we need to revalueize our base, and we need to spread out the load. So, I hope that we have business owners that are willing to accept, you know, being brought into that. So, all right, I'll quit yammering.
That was the one thing that I've been kind of talking about for a while now, and you've said, now you, you know, you're saying exactly the same thing. It's like, my little research that I did, just on my own, at Chelsea, in Northville, in Brighton specifically, in Milford, and, you know, Lyon Township, it's like, we have to look at what's going on here, because it's like going into a battle with your hands behind your back, and you don't have a whole lot available to us that they do. And once they started that synergy, like you said, it's like, you almost can't stop it now, you know? And it's the opposite of when everybody jumps on the negative bandwagon, it's even more positive when everybody gets going on that wagon, you know? So, that's gonna be a great discussion to have, because I think it's a tool that our DDA really needs, you know, to put us in the same game.
Well, every community has their own challenges and their own benefits, so, you know, it's not an equal playing field for everybody to follow someone else's pattern, but we don't have to reinvent anything, we need to just capitalize on what other people have been successful with.
Yeah, I want to say that, you know, I'm feeling actually really energized tonight. I think, I think having this as a standing agenda item to downtown is great. I mean, it's, look, we're making baby steps, we're not gonna make dramatic, drastic changes overnight, it's gonna take step-by-step, little steps. And here we have a scenario where, a few months ago, we weren't even talking about this, this wasn't even on the radar. Now, we're coming in, we just passed a couple very important second readings, ordinances that's gonna help our downtown, which we did not have before. We're talking about issues that now we actually can have a life and can move forward. Do you want to talk about a couple of things here? First of all, I love the idea of working with Mr. Bonner, trying to work something out, or through his attorneys, or attorney. When I talk to people that look at South Lyon, and that's pretty, I hate to admit it, but that's one of the first things they say, is that you take them downtown, you show them to our downtown, and you point out the nice things, you point out Grant Trunk and Brown's being here forever, and you point out, I apologize if I'm leaving out a lot of businesses, but you get my point, you point out all these nice things, but then the thing that sticks out their mind is they say, "What the heck is going on with that..."
Green gully.
Yeah, and I don't have an answer, other than, for the last 20 years, city council hasn't really done anything. So now, we're at least having conversations where, this is the first solution I've really heard, not solution, but let's call it an idea, of how to address this. And that's never been offered before. So I, you know, we're having discussions, it's just discussion points, but I think some serious ideas are coming forward. For example, if we weren't having this discussion, we wouldn't be talking about, Glenn, I don't know, maybe you would, but I have to believe that this discussion kind of contributed you to go seek out the people of Brighton, to some extent. And I think that was very helpful. In fact, my first feeling was when Mrs. Steinaker, she sent the letter to the paper, then she comes in, and I'm kind of thinking, what's, when somebody says they're from a different city, and they come in to be critical, my flags, my defensive flags of South Lyon go up. And sure enough, yeah, Glenn, thank you, you sent the, contacting Mr. Bone, and he confirmed that she did have an agenda with the Bonners, and it kind of was clear what her intentions were, so. But yeah, other than that being said, I think we need to continue these discussions, I think we need to explore more with the tax abatements, which I think could really lead somewhere. And I would like to see how we can handle this with the green Art Craft Building. Myself, if there's a fundraiser, I will be there, I think that'll be great. There's so much people that, there's so much appreciation for art in this community. We had the, Maggie, Seascape's and, I don't want to butcher the name, Seascape's and violins?
Just as a side note, if you watched the Super Bowl last night, Coldplay played the song with all the violins that was played at...
Yeah, that's true.
See, we led the trend, we started the trend.
Yes, yes, so we started the trend, so.
But we had, what was it, 300 and, over 330 people?
350.
350 people on a Tuesday night showed up to Paul Baker Park, and credit to the Four Seasons Garden Club for cleaning that up, shows up to Paul Baker Park to watch violins. And it was just a nice night, summer night, to get away, but that's the kind of infusion that we have in this city, is, if there was some sort of project that you're talking about, I guarantee you there'll be people lining up that will want to contribute and help our, and, you know, $10 adds up quickly, those donations will add up quickly. So, that's something I think we could, we should explore. That being said, that's all I have for the downtown, thank you.
I did want to say that in Mrs. Steinaker's defense, there's always two sides to every story, so I don't want to make it sound as though she had no credibility in what she said. I have no idea what the truth of the matter is, but that did prompt investigating a little bit further what Brighton had going on, so I was grateful for that.
I do have a question, Mary. So, I feel like collaborating with the DDA is gonna be a huge asset, and something that we absolutely have to do, it's a necessity. So, Councilwoman Kurtzwell, I just have a quick question in regards to the DDA grants. Have you proposed that yet to anyone from the DDA?
No, I mean, I'm just throwing the idea, you have several individuals here tonight from the DDA, I mean, they're an independent organization, they can, if it's something they feel would benefit the DDA, you know, I don't want to impose anything by any means. I mean, it's just an idea, if they want to carry it through and follow it through, I would be willing to support a vote on council to fund the grants. But it's whatever they want to do, I mean, what their strategic plan is, where they want the grants to be focused, do they want it focused on facades? I mean, this is for them, you know, it's just an idea. Wyandotte, this young man, I did say, these are valuable grants, just very, very valuable.
I know there's other cities that also engage in this, Inkster is one of them as well. And I know Inkster is not a sister city to South Lyon, but they offer that, I mean, grant availability to their local residents as well, and local community restaurants and things of that nature. So, actually, Gracie's Pizzeria on Inkster, like the main strip, they were offered a grant a couple of years back, and I know a couple of other businesses as well, so I can touch base with you on that.
I think it's a good question, I think you answered it well. I think what you also said, Joe, about we're taking little bites here, and I think we're making big strides.
Do you think the Art Craft Building would, or if we turn that into a gallery, wouldn't that take away from the menagerie?
Oh, no, 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 this would be turning it into an art gallery for art exhibits, so you would bring an artist in, that would bring in their exhibit. So you could bring an artist in with 30 or 40 pieces of art that, you know, that is here. I'll give you an example, my husband and I are gonna be going over to Farmington Hills, they have a exhibit there speaking of the Holocaust victims, there's actually an art exhibit over in Farmington for a short period of time, that is, it's art done by Holocaust victims when they were in their camps. So, it'd be a somber exhibit to see, but it would be meant for exhibits, to bring in exhibits, to rotate exhibits. The Culture Arts Commission has an exhibit right here in the lobby, once a year, of students from the high school. You can promote artists that are in Detroit that are producing phenomenal stuff, you could do sculptures, and that's why the Art Craft Building would be kind of good, because it has height in it. So you could bring sculptures in, you could bring in pottery, you could bring in jewelry, I mean, there's a lot you can do. You know, art isn't just what you hang on the wall, you could bring in a textile exhibit and bring it there. But it would be a rotating exhibit, but it would also potentially could be a place for the Culture Arts Commission to meet. They also have functions that you could come in and attend one of the functions, whether it's with children or adults. You could do poetry reading in there, you could have a book signing in there.
Well, the reason I say that is, I am a huge proponent of art myself, my brother was voted top 25 best artist in Detroit three years in a row, he is all about it.
He's never one on the list for an art exhibit.
But, I'm not biased. However, I just, my mind goes to, what would the younger generation want to see in downtown South Lyon? I'm talking like a toast from Birmingham, or a wine bar, or something hip and fun for even the young parents to come out and want to go to. So, not that an art gallery wouldn't be fantastic, because like I said, I'm a huge proponent of art, but I'm kind of leaning toward what Glenn is saying, we should try to generate taxes out of this, and try to put something in there that's going to generate a lot of business.
You know, it doesn't, you know, I'm just a proponent of the arts, so, you know, I'm gonna take an opportunity to promote the Culture Arts Commission, and have a role as much as I can to assist them. If the final product is something other than an art gallery and art center, it will be what it will be. I mean, it's not an issue, you know what I mean?
Right, we're putting the cart before the horse right now.
I think it's a good talking point, I mean, I think we're, we have to sit down first.
Yeah, whatever it will be.
Good ideas, Maggie, keep them coming.
Well, your idea's good too, so.
I'm all that line.
If we start to have these conversations, I mean, you know, this is something that hasn't been going on before very much. And it doesn't mean people weren't thinking about it, it just, this is something that needs to come up, and we need to discuss these things, because if we're going to get serious about how we want to do something in downtown, yeah, the green building is an issue, but getting them to sit down at the table with this first is the first issue. And if we can do that, and have a nice discussion, and then throw some of the ideas out there, we don't know where it's gonna go, you know, and, you know, an olive branch maybe, you know, I don't know. So, it's an area that we haven't tried, from what I've seen in the past, it's a different tact. It might work, you know, I don't know, so, Mike.
At the next meeting, I think all this talk is, at this point, I think we need to revisit this idea of an economic development coordinator, because it sounds like one of the biggest problems we're having here is that we need to have a liaison between the city, the DDA, and the businesses. We need a person to coordinate those efforts. And we can talk all day and come up with some great ideas, but until we actually have a person, that their role, their only focus is on economic development, and working with the grant system that we now just approved, that way you have somebody that's the liaison between the city, DDA, and businesses, and that's their only function. So I think at this point, to get this going, we need to revisit what we discussed on January 11th, the role of an economic development coordinator, and how that would play in with what we've done in the last month, as far as improving the downtown area. That's just a suggestion.
Well, that's a good suggestion. That's all I have.
I have nothing else.
So is that an agenda item?
I'd ask, it'd be on the next agenda.
Okay.
One other thing, we were talking about extending olive branches to local businesses, or, you know, in this case, fodder building or art craft building. It would be nice to, at some point, try to extend that to Norm as well, see if we can, I know that's been talked about before, but it would be nice to try and work it out where maybe he'd be willing to move the buildings, I'm sorry, the cars from his building to a different facility. You know, maybe have a new leadership in here, that may facilitate the kind of things a little easier, better, so.
I love Norm, I love his business, he's been here a long time, know all the stories behind it, and I have an idea, I haven't said anything to anybody yet about it, so I will, you know, not tonight, but I'm gonna try something too, and we'll see. I'm seeing mine.
Okay.
So, here's my tour.
No inside.
John, I heard a couple people, I've had like five people come up to me and complain about Norm and the art, I mean, Norm's great, I mean, I got nothing wrong with it.
You know, there, people complained for 25 years, but he's also does, he has a great business, you know what I mean, so, you know, I mean, it's, you gotta look at it two ways a little bit. He's been, he's been here with all the businesses that have come and gone, he's still here.
I gave a plane because I have flat tire on Sunday, and he's the only one that was open, so I gave a plane.
He's recession-proof.
John? John, I'm an ambassador with the Chamber, don't figure about the Chamber of Commerce, we have a lot of members who are growing pretty strong, makes part of that, and probably a lot of ideas out there from those guys.
Okay, manager's report.
Okay, first I want to apologize for having to step out, apparently my supper didn't sit very well with me, but I hope I'm over that. First, I met with Representative Kathy Crawford from the state legislature today, she wanted to commend the council on taking the step forward of their, having our first strategic planning and goal-setting retreat, she's very excited for the City of South Lyon on that. She also wanted to extend an invitation to the entire council to come and visit the Capitol Building, meet with her, set up an appointment to talk with all of you about anything that she and our state senator can do to help out South Lyon. And if we do that, she'd also like to take the opportunity to recognize you from the House floor, so if that's something that you all are interested in, we can work on trying to arrange that, whether it be a full contingent or just a small contingent of the city officials. As I sent on to you last week, we did receive information last week from DTE on their 2016 tree trimming program, I have placed all of that information on the city's website, the map, the letter that every resident that will potentially be affected, or property owner that will be affected, should be getting, as well as their Right Place, Right Tree flyer, and a contact email for anybody that has any questions. That information is all on the front page of the city's website. We do have several board and commission members that have expiring terms, Lisa and I will be working on contacting them and asking them to turn in applications for reappointment to... for reappointment to those boards and commissions. And I do want to point out that we do have a vacancy on the Board of Review, and one remaining vacancy on the DDA, so beyond the people that need to be reappointed, those are positions that we are looking to fill. Our property tax deadline is 2/14, which is a Sunday, and we are closed the following day for Washington's Birthday, so I want to, or President's Day, so I want to make sure that we let the residents know that the actual tax deadline in the city of South Lion is this Friday at 5:00 PM, 2/12. So they have an opportunity to make sure, and Elise has said Tuesday morning, if things are in the drop box, that we will accept them, but the actual deadline is 5 o'clock on Friday, 2/12. Talking about the downtown, an out-of-the-box sort of thing that another community I've worked in has done is very similar to what Maggie proposed this evening, I'll be putting a memo together on that. The community took an old box store, closed Walmart, purchased the building, and then recruited a business to come in, leased it to them for a dollar a year for five years, with certain employment and renovation requirements to the building. At the end of the five years, they got the building for a dollar, so it's something, it's an out-of-the-box way to do economic development, but it was a great way to redevelop a box store that had significant restrictive covenants on it, which you tend to have in the downtown, so I will put together a memo on that for the downtown. That is all I have this evening. Don't forget SACMA on Wednesday. The networking begins at 6:30 in the Oak Room at the South Lion Hotel, and dinner will be served at 7:00. Our speaker is Bob Bruner from the Michigan Municipal Services Authority, and he's very much looking forward to speaking to us, he's never spoken to the SACMA group before.
Anybody have any more comments, are we good?
Thanks, Lynn.
Counselor comments?
Counselor comments?
Yeah, I do. I just wanted to bring attention, I received this over the weekend, they didn't sign it, but it is from concerned residents of South Lion and Lion Township, and it's regarding the Mr. Vapor that is opening up on Pontiac Trail and Nine Mile. And here's the letter, if anybody wants to read it. You know, I stand with the parents. I think it's so hard for parents to raise kids today, and I want to thank these parents for including me in on their call for family values. And I put a phone call into Lanny Young today, late in the afternoon, to see if Lion Township is working on an ordinance for this. And I want to make it really clear, these parents are not saying, get rid of Mr. Vapor, what they're saying is, this kind of business should not be near Centennial, Millennium, or Sayre Schools. That's what they're saying. And I have to support these parents, and I hear your call, I really do. So hopefully, we can get something going, and get this a little bit regulated and out of our school areas. So thank you, all of the parents that included me in on this, thank you so much.
Maybe, Lion Township is looking to...
Are they? I have a phone call in the lane, okay, thanks.
I'm good.
I'd like to hear from Bob Martin on the big hole.
It's big.
I went, I was by there today. How's it going?
It's not big anymore.
Folks that think you can dig a water main, sewer main with a shovel, go look at that hole, that's a gigantic hole.
Yeah.
When you talk about teamwork, we hit it out of the park this past week. Besides working with a private contractor, the Water Department, incredible work by them, the DCW, phenomenal, led by Ron Brock, Jeff, just some really, really good people. And then, lo and behold, we find out we have to go into a manhole to secure the lead coming in after we redid this work. A phone call was made to the Fire Department at around 11 o'clock Friday morning, and Chief Kennedy had his crew out there and ran a first-class confined space entry with oxygen down that hole with his crew. We couldn't have done it without Mike, phenomenal. Rose Excavating, but just phenomenal guys. We've taken that job, just think about it, it was two weeks ago tonight, I came to the council and asked permission to try to move forward on this job, and I can report back tonight, the job is complete, done, and finished. And that lot will be starting to be cleaned up tomorrow, the hole is filled, but we've had to bypass sewage pumping. That'll be moved off-site Wednesday afternoon, you know.
So what was the blockage, Bob?
What there was, was the sewer gas is so toxic, it's hydrogen sulfide, and it's a byproduct of organic matter, which is the breakdown in wastewater, okay? And that has literally eaten away at the manhole that we replaced last year at this time, but it literally went up that line, and it consumed the concrete that was there for 40 to 50 years. We went in and replaced almost 35 feet of brand-new sewer line with hard-walled, thick-walled PVC, which is, it's imported, so it won't be affected by that going forward. We have another repair now done going forward, I'm thinking for 35 to 40 years. I'm hoping I'm not working here then.
You're not getting out that easy.
I have a lot of school loans I'm still paying on my credit. It's been a really, really successful week, and, you know, it's easy to be a superintendent when everything's working good. Easy to be a parent when everything's working good. I'm dealing with both right now. You know, when a kid comes home, and they're homesick because they're not at home, or you've got a major problem on the job, sometimes that's when you find your finest hour, and I think this is one of our finest hours, and I couldn't be prouder of my guys, and I love everyone. Thank you for giving us...
Thanks. And that's all I need today, thank you.
Bob, I got to say one thing real quick, it's just, Maggie, you're an arts person, I'm going to kind of go, I like the arts. All I can say, the easiest way is to back up exactly what you said, it was like watching, I mean, maybe I'm making it sound funny, but it was like watching a symphony, because everybody was working in hand-in-hand, I mean, I spent about an hour and a half, maybe, Thursday with you guys.
And I loved it.
And then Friday, I didn't get in the hole, I wanted to, but...
I didn't.
But it was amazing watching these guys that were from different, not just our guys, you know, Rose Excavating, everybody, and they were all working in harmony. I mean, and it was like everything, they all seemed to know what each other was thinking, and it didn't, no dissension, it was stressful, it was cold, the weather was lousy, and so, yeah, Bob is absolutely right, man, they, I was impressed.
Thank you. Hundred times over. And we loved seeing you on the job site, that gave so much pride to my guys, and it was, it was cold as you-know-what that day.
Yeah, it was.
It was a good day, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, John. I just wanted to say, Peter, you brought up a good point about Glen Meadows with the stop sign and yield sign, I know a lot of people back in the neighborhood, with Covington and Wellington and Norchester Streets, they all, there's a lot of houses back there, and they all come together. And I don't know, I mean, what I know is, there are those houses that go into Glen Meadows, I know they've been built recently, so, and there's a lot of people that, what I've seen, have cut through, they're going out to, connects to Martinale, if I'm correct.
That's through Martinale, go through there.
And then there's, then there's also Carriage Club across the street, so I guess the point I'm making is, there's a lot of families back there, and along those streets, there's a lot of children back there, and I don't know if a stop sign would be warranted, of course, I'm not the expert, but I would be interested to see the results of how that turns out to be of the study, if it would be warranted. And then also, we received a nice letter in our packet, addressed to the South Lion Fire Department, Attention Chief Mike Kennedy. I'm not going to read the whole letter, but basically, it was from Millennium Middle School thanking, oh, yeah, Millennium and Centennial, thank you, thanking firefighters Brad and Jeff and Cindy for coming in and getting the children involved. And I can't stress enough, I think back to when I was in middle school, and how important that was to see positive role models coming in to the school and showing you, there's so much negativity in this world, to see positive, hard-working role models in front of you, and telling them, this is what you could be, it's just really good. But the reason why I'm bringing this up is because we get these kind of letters all the time in our packets. It seems like, if not every meeting, every other meeting, we get thank you letters to our police and to our fire, and it just, it really speaks to the character of our community, so, thank you for that, chief. Then also, just wanted to say, as we enter the Lent season, I just wanted to wish everyone a solemn and eventually joyous Lental season, and want to say thank you, so, that's it.
Councilwoman Nezzy actually addressed what I was going to say, so nice job, Chief Kennedy, and to your department, yeah, and to the rest of the crew, and also, Bob, great job as well to your men as well, so, thank you.
When Lynn was out, I was teasing Bob about being, you know, granted print status around here.
It was my reign.
He had handmaidens and things out there. You know, this whole repair, first off, Jason, watching Jason work was really, I mean, it's artful. You could see that man scratching your back with his excavator, he is so gifted, that's really kind of fun to see someone that's really skilled at what they do. But this was a good illustration of, there was an awful lot of resistance when we were taking the dedication of Phase Five's sanitaries and stuff, and this 20-foot easement that people were grousing about giving us, and with the depth of that line is equal to what Bob and those guys were up against with this thing, and that was like a 40-foot hole to be able to get in there. So there was an awful lot of, this is just illustrative, that the city is not the enemy, but we do have obligations, and we have experts that understand what really is involved in trying to protect and take care of the assets of the city. So there was nothing that was unreasonable or untoward going on during those discussions. This was a very constructive meeting, I thought, we had, first off, it was a much shorter one, and I was really digging that, too, but there was an awful lot of positive information exchanged today instead of the bickering. But I have to, I had asked Tim at our last meeting to look into some issues as far as what response city council could end up having for behavior that was considered out of the code of, outside the boundaries of our code of ethics. And he, I had talked to him during the last couple of weeks, and he was resistant to act on that, in that I was the only one that had requested that review, and I was hoping to be, to ask for a sense of counsel to direct our attorneys to outline the process and the potential outcomes if a majority of council had come to the conclusion that there had been acts that had been inappropriate and outside the code of ethics as far as disclosing confidential information. And I was hoping we might be able to give Tim some directive for their, not necessarily him, it might end up being a conflict of interest for him, but his firm, the ability to provide information that we could either act or not act on.
Isn't that in our charter, our city charter?
Yeah, but it's...
It's not, it's over broad?
It's, well, it is, it's not in the...
I thought I saw that in there.
It's in the, in our...
Court.
It's in the city ordinances, the city code.
The city ordinances, yeah, it wasn't the charter, it was the city ordinances. But nonetheless, to try to get an understanding of what the process might end up being, and what the ramifications, the scope of ramifications there might be available, so...
I'm 100% behind that.
Yeah.
I'd support that.
So would I.
Well, if you could ask someone in your office to pursue that, I would appreciate it. Do you think that's something you could have at our next meeting?
I will try.
Yeah. I don't know that it's a necessary rush, but I mean, it doesn't seem like it'll end up being too onerous to outline.
Yeah, the only hesitation I have is just identifying who's going to do the work, making sure they have time to do it, outlining the scope of the assignment, and getting something that pulled together and is cohesive and comprehensive.
Right, thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Well, a couple of things. One of them, like you said, we get these things in the mail, I think Active Faith is a great organization, so I wanted to say this for them, they're having a strikeout in hunger for 2016, Sunday, March 6th, from 1:00 to 3:30 PM at Penn's Bowling. So if people are interested, call 248-437-9790. It's for a great cause, so, supports a lot of people in this town. Another one, another letter, I won't go into it, but I want to say thank you to them. This makes it all worthwhile for me, more than anything, when I get a packet sent to me from the grade schools. Brummer Elementary, from a bunch of second graders, who took time out of their day to every single one to write me a letter, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to respond to them all here, but I'm going to write them a letter back, and I want to say thank you to Angela Dobloski, who got this sent to me, and it was humbling, you know, reading some of these things from these kids. Some of them, I wasn't sure what they said, but some of them, it sounds like they're going to be up here pretty soon, so I, that was something for me, and that's about all I have, so...
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Cool. It's not midnight.
Not midnight.